Good evening. I show it is 6:00 P. M. Called to order the Louisville City Council Workshop Meeting for January 4th, 2021, and announced we do have a quorum. The mayor will not be with us tonight. He's a little under the weather, so we wish him well. And my understanding from the city secretary is we have no speaker cards, so we can go ahead and begin. A first item is discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda. We have no public hearings, so first thing on the agenda for the council is the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, let's move on. Regular hearing, item number seven. Item number eight. Item number nine. And item number 10. Hearing, we have no discussion on those items. We have no closed session tonight, and at this point, I'd like to move on to a presentation, review of budget and financial update presented by Director of Strategic Services Gina Thompson and Finance Director Dave Urb, and they'll be presenting a PowerPoint for us.
Okay, I believe I've shared my screen with you, so I'll go ahead and get started. What we wanted to do was give you an update of where we ended the year, the fiscal year 2019-20, with just a little bit of talking primarily about the general fund, and then I'll touch on some of the other funds as well. So the general fund, I wanted to talk about general fund revenues. This is probably the slide I'll spend the most time on, but you can see on the dark black circle that I have here at the bottom were total revenues. If you look at this 1920 original budget column, we had originally estimated $100.6 million for general fund revenue for 1920. The adjusted budget was 90.4 million, and that was when we looked at it at mid-year in March, when we were starting to see the effects of COVID, and we were trying to gauge that uncertainty related with COVID and what effects financially we would feel from that. So we decreased our estimates by quite a bit. When you look at the 1920 year-to-date, that's actually how the year ended. This is not an audited number. We don't have our auditors, our outside auditors in yet, but this is primarily how it will look unless there are some changes, but they'll be fairly minor. So you can see that we ended the year at 100.56 million compared to the original budget of 100.6, which would lead you to think, well, we pretty much hit it right on target with the original budget without a lot of fluctuation. But I wanted you to kind of see some of these. As you look back through the categories, you'll see there's a lot of fluctuation. And the main part of here, from 100 down to 90 and back to 100, that's a $10 million swing, give or take, and 8 million of that is related to sales tax. But we'll talk about that, the volatility of sales tax and kind of where we are on that. But first, I wanted to talk a little bit here about fines, forfeitures, and court fees. You know, that's related to our motor vehicle violations, as well as our warrant fees, and some of that was put on hold during the year with COVID when we kind of stepped back on some of the contact with public and actually out ticket writing, as well as checking for warrants for other cities, things like that. So we had originally estimated 3.1 million. That's, that reestimate was down to 1.8, and you can see it actually came in quite a bit over our reestimates, but not quite up to where we had originally started the budget year. Culture and Recreation Revenues is the other line I wanted to talk about. You're all familiar with Thrive, and that was about a $700,000 hit. We originally thought we would have that open, and we would be getting lots of memberships, and everything would be great. Well, by the end of the year, we still weren't open, and so, as you know, we didn't, we didn't sell as many memberships as we had thought. And in fact, we're just now starting to see some of that revenue take place. I think I looked today, and we do have $165,000 worth of membership, so that's great for Thrive for the current fiscal year. But in 1920, that was a decrease of about $700,000. In addition, we didn't get all of the park development fees that we had anticipated receiving, and so you'll see a corresponding decrease on the expenditure side related to those fees, because as they come into the general fund, we just transfer them out to capital to set us up for future projects on the park development side. And so, even though those fees didn't come in, about $400,000 worth, you see that savings on the expenditure side, too. And there were a couple of good things related to our park fees this year. I think when COVID hit, people realized they could still hang out at the lake and enjoy the lake, and so that revenue was up quite a bit. In fact, it was, park entrance fees were up over 180,000 more than what we had originally budgeted. And the concession mayor revenues out there, like for the golf course, Eagle Point Marina, the Slalom Shop, all of those were up about 175,000. So we did see a couple of great things that occurred in our park fees that offset some of the decreases. But the main revenue source that we always talk about with general fund is this tax category. That includes your property tax, as well as sales tax, and then all your other franchise fees. On the tax side, our property tax, we've actually gotten in 99.9% of this reestimated amount for property tax. That's about 98.7% of our original budget on property tax. So property tax came in pretty much on course. Sales tax, though, you'll notice that 74 down to 67 and then up to 75, that's entirely the volatility of sales tax. We had originally, part of the 74 included 30.7 million for sales tax. And when we reestimated, we reestimated down 24 million for sales tax. And then it actually came in at 32.4 million, which is 105% of what we had originally budgeted. So if you'll recall, when we talked last about sales tax, we talked about that volatility and looking back at trends and trying to figure out what COVID was going to do to us and how it was going to affect sales tax. We looked at, you know, we talked with professors at universities, we looked at what other cities were doing, we were trying to get a handle on how to best be conservative with what we were estimating for sales tax. And so we were very conservative, but in the end, sales tax actually came in right on target. Oh, when you look at this overall revenue, you're going to see that it looks pretty good. Our revenue is actually over, just over 10 million more than we were estimating at mid-year. So going on to the expenditure side, you'll also see here, we had, we had originally estimated 99.2. When we redid our revenue estimates, we decreased our budget down to 93 million. And then the year-to-date actually came in even less than the 93 million that we had reestimated. We are far more in control of our expenditure situation than we are the revenues, especially the sales tax. And so on the expenditure side, we were able to make sure as vacancies occurred, we could hold those as we needed to, we could release funds when we needed to. But this is really a effect of all of the budget reductions we talked about during our budget presentation, primarily holding some of our capital project transfers, and that's something we would like to get back to in the near future, as well as some of our savings in personnel. So one of the things that I did want to talk about was then this couple of line items here, the fire department, you'll see there's a 23.2 down to 21.9. Normally, we don't see savings in the fire department because we have to staff our fire according to our staffing schedules. But we did have the SAFE for Grant, if you'll remember, that we were able to apply to this year's general fund funding. That's a three-year grant that the fire department and finance worked on getting for the 18 new firefighters that we hired two years ago. So this is the second year of getting that funding, and that's where you're seeing that savings, that that grant came in and took some of those expenses for us. We will get one more year of that grant, about 750,000 next year, or the current year that we're in right now, the 2021 year. I also wanted to mention, in public services, a lot of theirs, this 14.4 down to 11.1, about 2 million of that are transferred to CIP that we held off on. And we will want to reinstate those as the most we can. And so that's something I think our manager will be talking with you about at our council retreat, trying to reinstate some of those transfers over to our infrastructure, as well as maybe using some of fund balance to do that. But another thing that I thought was interesting when I was looking at these expenditures is that they also had a $400,000 savings into anitorial services, and that was related to closing down some of our facilities for a little while. So that was kind of an interesting byproduct of the situation that we're in and COVID that really hadn't been estimated to have savings like that, but it did end up being a savings. Throughout all of the departments, we've seen savings in travel and training because we're only doing virtual training. So that's why you're seeing a little bit more savings here than we had originally anticipated. So all of that to say, your revenue came in higher than what we budgeted, our expenditures came in lower than what we budgeted. So instead of having, originally, we thought we would put 1.4 million into fund balance. At, at mid-year, when we looked at all the adjustments related to COVID, we actually thought we may have to draw some out of fund balance at 2.6 million. And as it turns out, we're actually going to be putting in 10.1 million into fund balance. What's great about that is, two things. One of them is that this can be used for one-time things in the future, and that can include things like our infrastructure. If we wanted to take a million or two to replace some of the infrastructure improvements we weren't able to do, we can certainly use that. I believe we could also use that for other things like ED payments or liabilities, or any type of one-time kind of expenditure, or any type of ED agreement there. So you've got some funding now that you're able to allocate to one-time services. I wouldn't recommend that for ongoing expenditures, like our employee payment, or putting some of those employees back in the budget. This really can only be used for one-time things. But it does bode well if we want to look at mid-year of implementing some type of a salary adjustment that we weren't able to put into the budget this year, if our sales tax is continuing the way it has been. I think that's something that our city manager will want to talk with you about in more detail during the council retreat. So that's really the general fund discussion. Does anyone have any questions on the general fund? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead to the Hotel Motel Fund. The Hotel Motel Fund, we originally estimated 2.5 in revenue. We readjusted that down to 1.6 once the virus hit and we realized nobody was going to be staying in the hotels, and we actually received 1.6, just a little bit higher than what we estimated. So that trend actually did come to fruition. For 2021, we do have an estimate of 1.9. So hopefully, our hotels will continue getting a little bit better than they are right now, so that we'll reach that. We did allocate 1.8 of that, so we want to try and make sure that we get 1.8 in revenue to offset those expenditures. Right now, this is a chart that shows our hotel occupancy, and it has really stayed fairly flat. Once April and May hit with the 28, 34%, we've been in the 45% range for the last few months. I did have somebody ask me why this didn't include all of our hotels. There are a couple missing here, and that's because we rely on the hotels to give us this information, and several of them just aren't forthcoming with us. So we can't make them give us the occupancy, but we do ask for it every month, and these are the ones. And at least, it gives us an indication of trend in citywide what's happening in our hotels. So that's the Hotel Motel Fund. I wanted to talk a little bit about the other sales tax funds, because we talked a little bit about general fund. As you can see, in the general fund, we have the sales tax and crime control, fire control, and the 4B funds. In each instance, the original budget was lower than what we actually ended the year at. So all of those funds, we'll see a little bit additional money than what we had originally projected, and definitely what we projected at reestimate time since we had decreased those. The only fund that wasn't remarkably affected by COVID in one way or the other was the utility fund, and it was a little bit affected, but it by no means was impacted the way some of our other funds were. The original budget was 34.1 million. We actually ended revenue at 37.9 million, so that's an increase of 3.8 million. Water sales were higher by 1.5, and wholesale water consumption was higher by 500,000. So that right there was 2 million, a million in sewer service, and then we actually had our capital recovery fees come in higher by $600,000. So all of that will show you that your increase of 3.8 will roll to your fund balance, and that can be used for future capital improvements, which is an awesome thing, because if you'll remember, when we last talked about the rate increase for the water sewer fund and our budget projections, we showed a need of over $50 million in the next three years for capital. So every bit of this 3.8 will help us out to reach that goal, and not just issuing bonds, as well as our cash reserves, but that will be able to roll there and definitely help us reach our goal there. The next thing, our city manager asked me to talk with you a little bit about was workers' compensation. So workers' compensation, we really wanted to just take a second and talk to you about how the COVID-19 virus has impacted workers' compensation. So one of the things is through workers' compensation days. Our quarantine work exposure code is what we originally used when we set up the system to track all workers' comp and quarantine. So originally, we had 129 days of quarantine work exposure in fiscal year 1920, so that was all the way from March through the end of September. And in 2021, which is October through the middle of December, we've had 283 days. The lost workers' comp days, this one includes 216 days are due to a positive test, so that means we've had people lose work days on workers' comp due to having COVID, as well as 133 were quarantined thinking they may have it. But really, you should add this 103 to this 129 to get the total compared to that 283, because we used two different codes originally, and then we went all to just this one code. But when you want to look at them at workers' comp lost days, we've already had 85 days that were due to a positive test just in the last three months. So we are seeing impacts on workers' comp. How that affects our revenue, I mean, our expenditure totals, we've had over $100,000, and that doesn't seem like a lot, I don't think, when you look at it on the face of workers' comp. But because the workers' comp claims have lifetime medical benefits, it really is worth it for us to go over with you that liability. And the example that we've put here is, in the event an employer were to die as a result of COVID exposure at work, there are additional benefits that are available to an employee's family. And so that's a great thing for our employees. In general, a surviving spouse would actually get 75% of the employee's average weekly wage for the rest of his or her life. If a minor child is involved, they would get 75% of that wage until they turn 18. So that's a great benefit for our employees, but it also is something that the city has liability to cover. We need to make sure that we can account for that benefit. So and along those lines, we really would recommend that we set aside a reserve for that future liability. It wasn't something that we had before COVID. It's definitely something that we have now, and we want to protect ourselves in the future. So we would recommend that we place $1 million in the risk fund as a reserve for this benefit. Donna, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, let me just add a little bit there. So this is one of my major areas of concern. The federal government deemed public safety is presumptive for workers' compensation, and what that means, even if the exposure occurred elsewhere, not at work, we still have to pay that as workers' compensation. So I asked Melinda to just take an average public safety salary and look at an employee that might have a spouse and a couple of kids, and talk about what those lifetime benefits might equal in case of a death. Melinda, do you have that number?
Yeah, so I just took a, it could be a police officer or a firefighter, because that benefit is capped at $1,007 salary, so that would be $52,364 a year. So if you took a spouse that was 45 and just thought she would live, estimated she would live to 75, and then a kid that was eight and a kid that was 10, who chose to stay in college until they turned 54, they would still get the $52,364. So that benefit for one police officer, firefighter, one employee, would be right at $3.6 million.
So that's my concern. It's a lifetime benefits. We have seen a number of cities, surrounding cities, that have had a death. Normally, it occurs in the public safety area, so that is why I am recommending that we transfer $1 million to the risk fund. And remember, with the risk fund, it funds workers' compensation. We've also seen some increase in unemployment benefits related to COVID, but all of those coverages are in the risk fund. The health fund is separate. It's a trust. So let's say, we think our liability may be workers' comp, but we do get some employees that have extensive medical, and we have had those payments also. You can transfer dollars from the risk fund over to the health trust. You can't do it vice versa, so that's why I would recommend that that 1 million be placed in your risk fund.
So that is the discussion on workers' comp. The second discussion that I wanted to have on the effects of COVID-19 since October 1st dealt with the COVID emergency response funding. We have 5.765 million set aside in our capital projects for COVID response emergency funding. If you'll remember, in September of 2020, council approved the use of 150,000 for COVID emergency response funding. Of that, we've used about $21,483 so far on modifications to facilities, miscellaneous equipment needs, and safety and cleaning supplies. In addition to that, not out of that money, but on COVID, we've spent 205,000 over in the health and the risk funds, and that's been spent on COVID testing, workers' compensation, and healthcare costs. So the bulk of that is still over there, but what we would like to do is move some COVID funding over to help take the pressure off of our health and risk funds to pay for that, so that also we aren't asking those funds to bear the entire brunt of COVID-19 when we have some emergency resource funding available. But we would like to ask you to move that funding over. So basically, in the end of that 5.765, you've already allocated 150,000. We're asking now that you allocate $1 million for the workers' compensation reserve, as Donna just spoke to you about, another 400,000 for the 200,000 that we're seeing over in the health and risk fund right now, plus 200 that we don't know is going to hit. It's, we're spending this money every month, so we're going to have those expenses for the rest of December, January, February, before we can talk to you again about this in March. So if you were to allocate that 1.4 million, that would leave you a balance of just over 4 million at 4,151,857 in our emergency response funding. And again, we would revisit this at mid-year during the council retreat and talk about where we are, both in terms of this funding, as well as where we are overall with our funds, if sales tax is still coming in. I did look to see our property tax already starting to see some payments, and we're right on track on property taxes so far this year, where we have been in prior years. So I'm hopeful that that type of revenue trend is going to continue. So that's...
So the other thing I just might add, so Chris McGinn and his staff are also serving our social service agency, so we're really trying to get our hands around what the needs of the community might be, so we can bring back recommendations related to that 4 million for your consideration.
And that's all that I had prepared on the PowerPoint presentation for tonight.
Okay, anyone have any questions? City manager, did you have anything else that you wanted to present?
No, I think Gina did a great job, as always, covering the highlights. I guess it's somewhat comforting to know we're in a lot better position than we thought we might be. Still, as you know, Mayor Protem have some concerns about what property values may do, and we're taking some steps to continue to monitor that. But we will be bringing an analysis at retreat to decide what future actions you might want to take based on the financial condition that we have at that point in time.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing else for the workshop session, we can go ahead and move into regular session. We still have a quorum. So first item on the regular session is Visitor Citizen Forum. City Secretary?
Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. An awkward remarks from the audience, scampi, the feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Mayor Protem, let me make sure we don't have any hands raised to speak on this one. No, we have, Mayor Protem, we have no hands raised to speak on Visitor Citizen Forum. Mayor Protem, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you. Glad you noticed that. So next item then on the agenda is the consent agenda. City Secretary?
All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen subrequests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or ecomment card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor Protem, we do not show any hands raised on this whole item, and we receive no parts.
Okay, thank you, City Secretary. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second. I'm not sure who seconded.
I believe I heard Councilmember Jones seconded that.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, City Secretary, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Councilmember Troyer made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, those were all aye votes?
Okay, so it passes unanimously, unanimously. Next item on the agenda, regular hearings, item seven. City Secretary?
Consideration of a variance to Section 6-371 regarding the timing of parkland dedication for cash and luau and payment of park development fees for 24.120 acres located at the northeast corner of Windhaven Parkway and Parker Road, FM 544. City staff has worked with the applicant on the final plan for this planned development, along with an agreement addressing the future development of the X lot identified on the plan. Because the negotiation of this agreement is still in process, the applicant is requesting a variance to delay the dedication of parkland for cash and luau and payment of the parkland development fee until the issuance of the first building permit, at which time all due amounts will be paid in full and property will be dedicated. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption. Planning Director Richard Lukey is available to address any questions.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hey, City Secretary, would you please call the roll for a vote?
I should Councilmember Gilmore make the motion. Councilmember Troyer seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, those were all aye votes?
Thank you, City Secretary. The motion passes unanimously. Next item is item eight. City Secretary?
Consideration of an ordinance amending the fee schedule by adding a fee related to the new food truck program and a waiver of field rental and park fees for eligible tournaments. As part of the new pilot program for food trucks in Louisville, a new seasonal flag... a new seasonal flat fee and associated gross sales fee need to be added to the fee schedule. Moreover, in response to an updated agreement with the youth sports associations, a waiver of field rental and park fees needs to be added to the fee schedule. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. Mayor Pro Tim, we have no one wishing to speak on this item?
Thank you, City Secretary. Entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the item? Okay. I believe the city attorney needs to read.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the fee schedule, I'm sorry, of the city of Lewisville by adding a fee related to the pilot program for food trucks in Lewisville and adding a waiver of field rental and park fees for eligible tournaments, providing for appeal or separability and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Secretary, would you please call the roll for a vote?
So Councilmember Jones made the motion. Councilmember Gilmore seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore? Councilmember Gilmore?
Looks like the screen is frozen.
It does look like it's frozen.
Yes. I'll move on. Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green?
Aye.
I'll wait for him to come back in.
Let me see.
I'll give him just a second to come back in. Yeah. Mayor Pro Tim, city attorney says we have four votes, so we can move on if you'd like. But those were all aye votes?
Yes, we do have a quorum in favor. So the motion passes. Go on to item nine, City Secretary?
Consideration of ordinance ordering a charter amendment election to be held on Saturday, May 1st, 2021. For the Texas Election Code, the election must be ordered by February 12th, 2021. In an effort to have ample time to educate the public on the propositions, it is recommended that this election be called at this meeting. The recommendation is that the city council consider approving the ordinance as set forth in the caption?
I have a question on this.
Go ahead.
I was just curious if, the way that the propositions are written in our backup material, is that the, is that the language, or is that still pending?
That is the language.
This is the language. Okay.
Yes. Liz, I don't know if you want to comment. Liz has been working with outside counsel on the development of those propositions.
That was the language that was recommended.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I was just curious if it was the final, final language, because I guess my only concern would be about the first one, which seems like it's a little... I worry a bit about, you know, because of the length of it and just how clear. And I know it's a somewhat confusing topic, too. Wondering if, if that's it, then, I mean, if this is what the language needs to be, then I think maybe we just have a little more education we need to do.
We will have a lot of education to do on that one, you're correct. But I do think that is the recommendation from outside counsel to cover the various topics that have to be covered in Proposition 1.
Okay.
So entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, calling an election for various changes in the Lewisville City Charter, setting a date for said election, providing for notice thereof, and declaring an emergency.
She completed reading. Mayor Pro Tim?
Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson, you're muted.
So City Secretary, could you call for a roll, call the roll for a vote?
Yes. Show Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim, those were all aye votes?
Okay, I show the motion passed unanimously. That brings us down to ten. City Secretary?
Consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency until 11:59 PM on January 25th, 2021. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the CDC and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitated disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extending beyond January 4th, 2021. The recommendation is that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption?
Okay, thank you, City Secretary. Entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? City Secretary, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Show Councilmember Troyer made the motion. Councilmember Gilmore seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim, those were all aye votes?
Okay, I show the motion passes unanimously. That brings us to reports. First of all, we have a couple of presentations. I think the first one by Finance Director Dave Urb, a certificate of achievement.
Thank you, and thank you, council. I am pleased to share with the council that our financial report for fiscal year 2019 was awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Now, we typically receive this notice fall, but like many other things, there were delays with the GFOA in reviewing due to the pandemic. But I'll take the news weight. Anyway, this is a longstanding effort of the city. This is our 31st consecutive year that Lewisville's received this award. So coming on board, I just wanted to keep the train on the track and keep going. And I think it's a testament to not only the solid controls that we have in place, we also have a very cooperative, just departments that make this happen. So I just want to throw some recognition out there. Our financial report for the recognition is evaluated by an impartial panel, unknown to us, and we are evaluated in 19 separate categories. And in each of those categories, we were graded as proficient. And coming out of that, there were only two comments or suggestions for improving our report. And if you consider the number of financial transactions that we process every year and just the detail and the, just the level of detail that we provide in our report, that's quite amazing. And this report is not window dressing. It is used by the rating agencies and our investors alike. From our bond rating agencies, they look at this. And this is how we've been able to maintain, achieve and maintain our AAA bond rating. And our investors, they look at it as validation by a third-party source that our financials are solid. So what does that mean? That means we get great participation by the investors when it comes to bond sales, and it returns the lowest cost of financing, I think. And I think you've seen it with the most recent round of bond sales. Our average interest cost was about 1.4%. So again, a worthwhile effort to move forward with this application for this review. And it definitely reaps dividends. So again, I just want to recognize that departments and the cooperation that they've provided to make this happen. And I also want to recognize the accounting team for their tireless effort. If you, if you just knew the number of hours that this team has put in to prepare the work papers and four weeks of field work with the auditors answering questions and then putting together the final report, it's just quite amazing. So I'm going to recognize those. And then in closing, I just want to read a quote from the GFOA news release on this award. "The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management." So while finance is recognized with this, I think it's a, it's a citywide effort from the council to the manager's office through all the departments. So I just want to say thanks for that. And we're currently working on our fiscal year 20 audit, so no rest for the wicked here. We fully expect that this audit would be recognized as well. So that's all the comments I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Dave, I had to ask, in the letter, it mentions that you receive a plaque if it's been 10 times since the last one. And so this is, you know, 30 plus one. Are we getting another plaque?
Well, it's interesting. They used to send out plaques every year, and I think they got Y. So now we have one plaque, and they sent us a little medallion that we stick on it. So we'll be getting a medallion soon.
Are we running out of room?
We have them up on our walls, but I think with that one single plaque, I think we've got room for more, for sure.
Well, hopefully there'll be more, and very pleased to hear this. Very proud of the work that everybody, every department does, as you pointed out, and definitely very proud of the finance department and the work that they do. So thank you.
Thank you.
So we have one present from Richard Lukey, and it's also a certificate of achievement.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson, members of the city council. It's with great pleasure to report that the Texas chapter of the American Planning Association has once again presented the city of Lewisville a certificate of achievement for the Richard R. Lilly FAICP Program for Planning Excellence for 2020. This honor recognizes the professional planning standards demonstrated by the planning staff and the funding and support exhibited by the city council and Planning and zoning commission. More specifically, the city of Lewisville has met the chapter's goals for increasing awareness of professional planning, recognizing planning departments which meet certain professional requirements, enhancing neighborhood and citizen participation in planning efforts, encouraging the funding of professional training for commissioners, city council members and staff, and aiding in economic development and community image. We have certainly knocked it out of the park in all those categories. Lewisville was one of 36 Texas communities honored for planning excellence in 2020. We are very proud in the fact that we have consistently received this annual recognition since the Planning Excellence Program began over 20 years ago. The APA Texas Board Directors and the 2,700 members of the Texas chapter send their congratulations to the city of Lewisville and look forward to our continued success as leaders in community planning in Texas. So I would like to thank the council for all of your steadfast support, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and really all of our boards and commissions, along with the city manager and her staff, and all of the departments. We have definitely achieved this together as Team Lewisville. Very proud to be a part of Team Lewisville and look forward to all the future successes that are coming down, coming our way. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I never want to get used to getting awards, but, you know, they just keep coming, which is another reason to be very proud of our city. With that, let's move on with reports. I'm going to start with the city manager. Do you have anything?
The only thing I might add, I was very pleased when I saw the mayor's challenge turnout. We won. Not only did we win, but I think combined, our efforts brought more than the other two cities combined. So I think that's something really to be proud of. I'm very proud of our team and our community for stepping up in a very difficult year and supporting the Salvation Army.
Excellent. Good news. Okay, move to Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green.
I don't have anything to report, but I did want to just kind of tag along to what Richard was just saying. You know, between the report on our finance and budget situation coming through the COVID year and the news that we just got on the finance award and the planning award, and with the Salvation Army even, I just wanted to say how grateful I am to be part of this team. And that just continues to perform outstanding regardless of the situation that is thrown at us. So I'm just happy to be here in Lewisville.
Excellent. Thank you. Move to Councilmember Jones.
Okay, well, as an accounting nerd, I want to congratulate the finance and accounting team for the great work that they did receiving their award. Also, great job with the budget with Gina, as usual. And congratulations to our planning team as well for another deserved reward. And Happy New Year, everybody. Start a new year, you know. Hopefully, we'll be back to normal by sometime by the end of this year. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilmore?
Thank you, sir. Quick thank you to our first responders who are out there getting vaccinated and showing the public that this is, this is the right thing to be doing. So thank you for the messaging that's going out, and thank you, guys, for being out there on the front lines. With that, I also wanted to give a little recognition. Bobby Mitchell, our county commissioner, was re-elected for a new term on Friday. So she will be representing the vast majority of Lewisville for another term at the county. So I hope we get a lot of opportunity to bend her ear and continue to work with the county. I also wanted to congratulate Dan Rochelle, who is, I guess, now formally of the Lewisville PD. He is now a constable for the county and represents Lewisville as well. So his offices are here at the county offices just down the street from me. So a couple of great Lewisville folks that are representing us at the county level. So it was, it was fun to watch them on Zoom get sworn in.
Thank you, councilman. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, thank you. I just want to, want to say that I received confirmation this week that citizens do read the billboards. I was at a local business transacting. Well, luckily, I didn't have to give them any money, but I was there for some service work on my car. And the gentleman that checked me out looked at me and said, "Did I see you on a billboard?" And I said, "Probably, maybe so." I said, "I haven't seen it myself, but I've had other people comment." But it just, it was just confirmation to me that, you know, our, our efforts as a city to get the word out on things does, does make an impression on people. So, well done, James. And that's all.
Thank you, councilman. I have a few items regarding the MCL Grand. First of all, as always, Acoustic Jam Fridays, presented by Visual Arts League. Some incredible performers. Love it when they do their, where they throw out a subject and the people have to write an original song, because you never know what you're going to get. But some very, very clever and creative work done there. Art exhibits, the Visual Arts League just started its World Cultures exhibit on January 2nd, and that'll run through February the 6th. But probably the big item is that we have both Texas Tunes and Black Box Series coming up. And so just a quick run-through on those. And so just a quick run-through on those Texas Tunes. First act up is Hot Club of Cowtown on Saturday, February the 6th. And I actually have two shows that'll allow more people to attend and still have some social distancing. So the early show at 6:00 PM, the late show at 8:30 PM. Hot Club of Cowtown is an interesting group. They're kind of a western swing group, but they're really all over the map with their music. And they played with the likes of Bob Dylan, Willie Nelson, Dan Hicks, for you old timers that know who Dan Hicks is. The Abbott Brothers, Brian Ferry, they, they have quite a reputation, so I think that's going to be a great show. And then Saturday, March 20th, again, two shows, 6:00 and 8:30, Sunny Sweeney will be up. And she had a, for example, had a top 10 Billboard hot country song on the charts during 2010 and 2011, hit number 10 in 2011. So again, ought to be quite a good performance. And then the Black Box Series will start up, and first thing out of the box will be Beat Root Revival and Pat Byrne, that's on Saturday, February 13th at 7:30 PM. This is going to be an interesting group. They're, it's a, I call it a Celtic mix, one Englishman and two Irish people. So, but they play, again, a variety of music. And if you want to be impressed, they've been the opening act for Brian Setzer. If you don't know who Brian Setzer is, you should. And The Fix. And so they have been kind of burning up the, the live performance places with their performances, and I think that's going to be a great show. Doors open at 7:00 PM, the concert starts at 7:30 PM. And that's all I have on the MCL Grand, other than to wish everybody a Happy New Year and just be glad that the saying hindsight is 2020 now means it's hindsight. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
The Councilmember Gilmore made the motion. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, those were all aye votes.
Okay, we unanimously agreed to adjourn at 6:53 PM. Thank you all, and have a great year.